Is that Nathan?
Yep. Hi, David.
Hi.
We're waiting on a couple more here.
Scott is here.
Hi, Scott.
Hello.
Sherry McLellan.
Levi Shank.
Hey, Levi.
Hey, Nathan.
Janice.
Jess Silhan.
Who was the last one to check in, Nathan? This is Peter.
Uh, that was Jess Silhan.
Okay.
And I think we're waiting on Steven unless he's on here and I don't see him.
Do we have David Budris on the line?
Yep, David's here with us. Steven, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Alrighty. Looks like we got everybody for council members. Uh, it is, I have seven, seven o'clock on the dot by my watch. Uh, so go ahead and call the meeting to order. And, uh, we'll move on here. We got a pretty good agenda going. Um, so I'm gonna run through the visitors that I know that are on here and then if I, if there's somebody else that's on here that I have not mentioned, you can go ahead and state your name. Uh, Sherry McLellan. Um, Jess Silhan. Scott McGowan. Um, and Marge Womack, are you on with us? Yep, okay.
I wanted to be added to the agenda if possible.
Okay. Well, uh, yep, we'll get there next up. Okay, any other, uh, visitors that I didn't say? Okay, I think we got them all. Let's, uh, let's go ahead and move to additions to the agenda. Um, Marge, do you wanna go under public comment or you have something actual, actually to add to the agenda itself?
Well, I think, I think it's kind of adding to the agenda in terms of the, uh, council positions. But may, maybe it's just comments. Yes, Julie, it's a comment in, in regards to the last meeting, so go ahead and put it into, under comments.
Okay, I'll write it down. Yep. Any other additions to the agenda from the council?
This is Peter, I have three.
Okay, Peter.
I've received a query and a complaint from a citizen about the magnitude of his water bill, uh, for this month, or last month, I guess. And I'd like to discuss that. The second item I'd like the council to discuss is the disposition of the Harrington World War I, uh, memorial. And the third item I have is, uh, citizen complained about, uh, high pitched, high frequency sound that's emanating, allegedly is emanating from the cell telephone tower out east of town.
Okay, I've got those all written down.
Good, thank you.
Nathan, this is Justin, uh, two things. So one, I guess, if the cell tower, to Peter's point, that's not in the city limits, but I don't know, anything that we can do. Just keep that in the back of your mind. And then, uh, one of the agenda items we have, here says planned replacement of water meters. That can go under, those were, that was something that I brought up. But that can go under the 2021 budget discussion for the council.
Okay.
It need to be a separate line item.
Okay, we'll group that in with the budget stuff.
Thank you, Justin.
Okay, any other additions? Okay, I'd, uh, ask the question to approve the agenda, uh, with the, agenda with additions.
So moved.
Okay.
Second, Peter seconds.
Okay, we have a motion made in a second, uh, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
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 Okay, thank you, council. Hmm, okay, so getting to the agenda, the first one on the list here is the public hearing, uh, for the Department of Health for the, uh, W U E, which is Water Use Efficiency. So at seven oh five, I would like to, uh, open the public hearing. Um, and I might call on you, Scott, just to kind of explain a little bit, uh, what this is and, uh, and why, why we have to do it. Would you, would you, uh, explain that for us a little bit? If you would?
Yeah, it's, uh, the Centennial Clean Water Act requires the state to make us accountable for our water. Water efficiency rule is what it is, W U E. And so, one of the things they want us to do is advise our customers that we have, uh, you know, things we can do like, uh, shower restrictors and modern faucets and things like that to save water. You know, that's basically what the hearing's about. And we, they're requiring us to put on a hearing.
Okay. Well, I'd say if we have, uh, and there should have, there's been, there's a handout at City Hall, and I think we, we've got them in our packets before, um, just kind of goes more in depth and explains, um, explains more about it, but, um, I guess at this time I'd ask for any-
It went out in all the bills, Nathan, and then I've gotta deliver one to each apartment, uh, resident, yeah, within Landmark and, and Justin's apartments up there, uh, you know, Bligh Apartments.
Okay. Yeah, I think tho- these went out two months ago in the bills, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
But I guess, uh, with Scott on the line especially, he'd be able to explain, hopefully be able to answer any questions from the public or the council, uh, on the, on the matter.
I can do that.
Nathan, this is Justin, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So do we, how many properties now, uh, don't have a water meter?
City, city properties?
Sure, I mean, any properties that have water to them, whether, I mean, within the city, public or private?
So I, I don't know for sure the number, um, I think the, the city properties as far as anything that doesn't have a meter that has water running to it, um, boy, Scott might be able to answer that better. I know there's one at the park now, or I mean, I'm sorry, at the cemetery. And that, Scott, do you know where we have to put meters going-
I believe, uh, I believe that, uh, there's two at the, there's gonna be two at the park, one for the new bathrooms or the bathrooms we got. And, uh, the water system, sprinkler system at the park. But as far as actual city customers, I think there's like six that, that use less than the minimum, but they still have to be metered.
Okay, and that's just, there, that's just part of the counting for the water. We, we know how much goes out of our wells and they want us to be able to count for all the water that we use, correct?
Exactly, yes.
Does that answer your question, Justin?
Well, so do we have a plan to, I know that the, the two years that I did it, uh, there, there was left, I mean, every year there was properties that were not metered. Uh, but the goal I know of, of ecology or whoever, Department of Health is to have it hundred percent. So do we have a plan to get those properties that are not metered, metered?
Correct, yep, we're, those are the first stairs that we're gonna work on, so we've, uh, there's two things that kind of go in with that is, one, to get everything metered. And then the second part of that, uh, is to get, there's still some residences that have, uh, meters that are inside the buildings or the residents, to get those moved out to where, uh, there's no more remote reads or anything where people have to call them in. So we wanna be able to get all the meters out to where the meter reader can read it. Um, as far as an actual written plan, no, there's nothing, nothing official in place, but-
I moved two of those meters out just this, just the last two days. And we still plan on putting meters in the park. There's two in the park and one in the, uh, Triangle Park. I hope to get those done this year. And that would bring the city, um, items into compliance.
And how many properties, Scott, you and I had talked about it before, how many properties do you think that still have meters inside the buildings that we need to move out? I think you said six originally?
I think there's six and we've just, uh, we've, we've eliminated two of them just yesterday, so.
Okay.
At the time, they did the meters in the basements because they was, you know, protected the meter. And it was a better deal, but, you know, everybody's assuming that the water system is from the property line to the house is the city's meter or city's problem if the meter's in the basement. And it's, it's not.
Correct, we wanna have the meters there at the property line so that, that'd be the point of delivery and anything from there to the, to the building is the property owner's responsibility?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, so we're-
The bank, the bank is one of the ones that, that they used the bare minimum. But it's one of the ones we've gotta move, move out and put a, a meter on.
Gotcha. So we're, I'd say we're down under, under a dozen or a dozen, or under a ten of them to, to get moved and, and metered?
Yeah, I believe we were at ten last year and now we're down to eight, I think.
Okay, thank you. Does that help a little more?
Yeah, thank you, Nathan and Scott.
Any other questions or comments on the water use efficiency? I'd let this, the public hearing stay open till the end, but I don't wanna forget about it and, and end it. So I figured I'd just let, give everybody the opportunity to ask questions now and then close it right away, so, uh, I don't wanna forget.
Yeah, Nathan, they just require we have a, a open hearing, public hearing every, I think it's three or four years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I don't hear any more questions, comments, or concerns. Um, if nobody else has anything, then I would like to close the public hearing at, uh, seven thirteen.
Disposing, this is Peter, disposing the hearing, require a motion?
Yeah, to be safe, I, I would think so. That would probably be a good procedure.
If so, I so moved.
Okay, I think-
Levi, I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing, uh, signify by saying aye.
Peter's-
Aye.
Aye.
Can we get everybody, Steven, to devote?
Uh, sorry, aye.
Oh, okay. Alrighty, thank you, motion passes and we'll close, close the public hearing. Okay, so we have a couple different sets of minutes to go through here. We had a couple of special meetings last month, so we will, uh, go ahead and start with the September, the regular council, regular scheduled council meeting. Um, I understand that a couple of council members came in and brought some, uh, just small spelling and revision stuff to Janice beforehand. Um, does anyone have anything else for the September ninth regular meeting?
This is Peter, I do- One observation. I apologize profusely to the city clerk for having missed this, but in the September ninth minutes, minutes of the September ninth meeting under additions to the agenda on the front page, the first item should read laptop, not laptop, for clerk.
It's been corrected.
It has, thank you, Janice.
Uh-
Okay, thank you, Peter. Justin, did you have something?
Yeah, uh, so under council members, um, I think we should list, uh, Stephen Hardy.
Oh.
He's listed up above as mayor pro temp, but he's a, he's a council member, so he was voting as a council member.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Um, and then, so I'm looking at the ones that were sent out yesterday, uh, the corrected ones. Um, under fire trucks on the third page, um, so it talks about the total purchase price of ten thousand, is the city still owing three thousand six hundred for property taxes? Um, I don't, that's not the correct, uh, we, we agreed to pay the city, uh, the, the city agreed to pay the fire district this year thirteen thousand six hundred dollars.
For services?
For services, so it's not property taxes. I don't know how you wanna word that, but I just, to correct that.
Okay, let's, um-
Just for services?
Yeah, uh, fire, uh, protection services, maybe?
Fire. Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, under, uh, on page four, C R F funds, uh, the second sentence that says councilman Slack made a motion to purchase a lap for the clerk, I think it should be laptop.
Corrected already.
Okay.
Then, uh, under public comment, um, so everywhere else in the, the document, it refers to the person and then by their last name. And so there's two sentences in there that start with Mike. And maybe I think just to clean that up to say either Cronrath or Treasurer Cronrath, uh, in the second and third sentences.
Okay, so just take his, oh, yeah, I see it, okay.
And then, uh, finally, under the public comment, um, on the, under Chris Meats indicated public records, um, it says it, the report shows that the state required training has not been completed by council members. And so, um, I just wanted to correct that that it might, I know that I'm up to date. Um, I don't know which report he was provided or whatnot, but I've, I've met everything for the A W C and for the state of Washington, so I'd like the minutes to reflect that it's not all council members.
Okay. So we could put in, we could just add the word some council members, maybe?
I, I do believe he did say, I, I do believe he said all council members, but that is incorrect, so, um, I don't know.
Okay.
It might be good to put in parentheses the note, but I believe Chris's concern was we're all members. So that should, in the minute should reflect it as it was stated, I think. I also addressed earlier today, I, Janice and I went over the recording of the last meeting. And it is worthy of note that in, there are three votes that are reflected in the section on US Bank's big deposit box. The middle one of those, in all the copies that are out there right now, it says passes three two at the end of the first paragraph, that was actually passes four one.
Okay. Yeah, I've got the-
And I wish, I wish that, I think I, you can correct me, Steven, if I'm wrong, but I, I was the, the negative, I was the lone nay vote, and I think I asked to be recorded as that.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can do that.
You wish to be recorded as a nay?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you, guys. Any other, any other, uh, corrections for September ninth regular council meeting? Okay, hearing none, I would, uh, entertain, I would ask for a motion to approve the September ninth regular, regular scheduled council meeting minutes be approved?
Peter says Levi, so moved.
Peter seconds.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving as amended the minutes, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you, council, motion passes five zero. Okay, let's, uh, we've got a couple more sets of minutes to go through here. Let's go to the, um, September twenty fifth special meeting. Any corrections, additions, questions, concerns?
Uh, this is Justin, I had a question, um, on both this set of meetings and the October second, it doesn't talk about the topic. But maybe a topic could be added to, to both of those.
Okay, like the first paragraph, maybe?
Just, just like the other, just like the other meeting minutes, there's, there's a, like mayor's update or water system plan funding or US Bank big deposit, it just doesn't have anything.
Okay.
It's there with the-
Okay, we can put like the, um, bold, bold, uh, title on there. Okay, anything else? Alrighty, hearing nothing else. I would, uh, entertain a motion to approve the, um, September twenty fifth special council meeting minutes.
Peter so moves.
Okay, we have a motion by Peter.
I'll second it.
Okay, and second by David. Any more discussion on that? Okay, hearing-
Nathan, this is Levi. If I am correct, I do not believe I was at that meeting.
Correct, you, uh, correct, you're not, your name's there, but it has excused in parentheses next to it.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that was the one that I had.
Yeah, yep, correct. Okay, uh, all in favor of approving the September twenty fifth council meeting minutes, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Peter says aye.
Aye, this is Justin, Justin, I'm gonna abstain since I was not there.
This is Levi, I'll abstain as well.
Okay, do abstentions, so we have a capacity, uh, yes, three zero two, sorry. Okay. Okay, one more set-
Did they want the extensions, did they want the extensions recorded?
Uh, yes, please, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, we will move on to our October second, twenty twenty special council meeting minutes. Um, any questions, comments, or concerns on that one? Other, Justin, I'll put your, your header in there, your, uh, topic title in there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the October second, twenty twenty council meeting minutes.
Actually, real quick, Nathan, this is Justin.
Okay.
The very, well, this under, the meeting, the motion passes to adjourn, it says four zero or three zero, but above it said four zero, so did, I guess the council member didn't vote, is that what happened? Uh, I had to leave at a certain time, so that would be an answer, but- Okay.
Yeah, Steven left a little early.
This is Peter, what's the correct reading of the, please, three zero?
Yes, correct. Okay, um, where were we? We have, we have a motion to accept the minutes as corrected.
Peter seconds.
Did we have a motion on the floor already?
I'll make a motion after Peter's second.
Okay. Uh, motion made by- Uh, motion made by Steven and seconded by Peter, any more discussion?
I'm sorry, this is Peter, I apologize to the council, I thought I heard a motion, obviously not. When I cast my second.
Yep, no problem. We'll, uh, we'll move forward, all, uh, all members and, um, signify by saying aye to pass the October second, twenty twenty special meeting minutes.
Levi, aye.
Aye.
Peter says aye.
This is Levi, I'll abstain on that one as well.
Okay, so that passes four zero one. Levi, would you like to be recorded again?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you, council.
Hey, Nathan, this is Justin, can you ask, it sounds like there's a lot of stuff going on in the background, if people aren't talking, if they could mute their phones or?
Yeah.
A lot of feedback?
Yeah, absolutely, if you guys are able to do that, it'd be great. We are getting a lot of noise on this end. Okay, alrighty, thank you, guys. Let's move on to September bills. We have payroll and our bills in front of us, any questions, comments, or concerns there? Nothing, no-
Justin, I had a question.
Okay.
Um, I'm looking at, um, unpaid, unpaid claims, page one, item number eight eight eight.
Okay.
Uh, thirteen hundred nineteen dollars to Mike Heron, so I don't know why we're paying individuals, but, uh, Mike Heron for shop, water, and cemetery is, are we paying him pers- is he, uh, is he working for us, or?
No, so that, that's just, his name is on the check, it's, it's to the business, but his name was on there as well, I believe, is that correct, Janice?
It is correct. When I paid the C R F funds, it went in as Mike Heron, Harrington Truck and Auto. So it's just reflecting that, Mike Heron, Harrington Truck and Auto. just reflecting that, Mike Heron, Harrington Truck and Auto.
So that wasn't a personal check to, to that person, that was to the business?
No, it's, yeah, it's just Harrington Truck and Auto, and it just had a, and so it just reflected that, how it was, how the CRF fund was made.
So this says it's for shop, water, and cemetery, but thirteen hundred dollars, is that, that's for CRF funds instead?
No, did you not just hear me? It was, because when I paid all the businesses that got CRF funds, which Harrington Truck and Auto was one of those businesses, I had to put the business owner's name with the business, it just reflected that.
So that, that's, that's carryover?
It automatically pulled it, it was carryover, I didn't go back in and change and take everybody's first name out, so if I was to make a check out to, say, your business, Y Harrington, if, if City of Harrington owed Y Harrington money, it would, it would come up the same, it would come up Justin and Heather Slack, Y Harrington.
So when you pull, when you, when you, um, pay a bill there, if you, whatever you have saved in there for that, uh, entity, if you write two separate checks, it'll pull the name from whatever the last one was?
Correct.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's the business name, Harrington Truck and Auto, but because that's what, that's, that's the legal owner, and that's the legal business name.
Okay, so going forward, we could actually take those names back out?
Yes.
Okay.
And I will, and I can do that.
Okay.
I didn't realize that, that, that it, you know, that it would just follow through, I mean, but under accounts payable, that's, I mean, it's, it's really no harm, that's the business owner, that's the business name, that's who we're writing our checks to.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, so my question then, originally, I guess my original question is shop, water, and cemetery, what, what does that entail?
That's just the Harrington Truck and Auto bill for the, for the part, for anything that was purchased through Harrington Truck and Auto for, um, those different, um, funds for the cemetery or for water department. That's the, that's the monthly bill for, um, purchases made at Harrington Truck and Auto. Any other questions on the bills? Okay, hearing nothing else, I would entertain a motion to approve the September bills.
This is Levi, still move.
Okay, we have a motion by Levi, do we have a second?
Peter seconds.
Okay, thank you, Peter, any more discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none, uh, council members signify by saying aye to vote in favor of approving September's bills.
Aye.
Peter says aye.
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 Okay, heard everybody, motion passes five zero, thank you. Okay, next agenda item, uh, mayor update, I know Justin likes to have a mayor update, and you guys probably would as well, um, I'll kind of run through some of the stuff that I jotted down, if you guys have any other questions at the end, we'll go ahead and, uh, go ahead and ask those as well. Um, so we have quite a few of them here. So the first one, um, we applied originally for twenty-five hundred dollars for, uh, review of our policy manual, and we were awarded that money, we just got notice that we have actually received additional twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, to go on top of that. So we're, uh, Stephen and David and I have worked, I've met once, and we're gonna met, meet again here shortly, uh, to keep moving forward on the policy manual. Um, this money that we're allotted in the grant is to actually have, uh, um, the, um, lawyers look at it and to, so we can make addi-, uh, additions, corrections, anything like that, and, uh, they will end up getting a final copy to us for then, for us to vote on that, to accept it, um, if we choose to, and then they will make everything in a final copy and, uh, get it to us so that we can have it printed. Um, so I just thought I'd let everybody know that we've received additional funding to, uh, keep going with that, which is good. Uh, they're, they did help us out on that originally, but it is not cheap, as you guys can imagine. Um, sign up date, I know, um, David and, uh, Levi had worked on, um, sending a request for additional signage, um, coming into town on the, from the Harrington Tokyo Highway. Um, our public works director's been gone most of the week, so I haven't had a chance to talk to him, um, but I will follow up with him hopefully tomorrow and see what their decision's been, whether they're gonna, uh, put in another sign for us, or what we can do there, so I'll keep you guys posted on that.
Nathan, this is Justin, what, what, what kind of sign are you, I'm not familiar with what you're talking about.
So when you come in from the Harrington Tokyo Highway up by the cemetery, we'd, we'd had some, received some complaints about people speeding through there, it goes down to, uh, twenty-five, and, uh, so we'd met and came up with, um, sending off a, uh, that's not an application, a request for additional signing out there, so that we could move either the sign back that says reduce speed ahead, or put an additional sign to allow, uh, better visibility, so that they could get slowed down by the time they hit the edge of town. And so we went ahead and put in a request for that through Lincoln County, and, uh, to get some additional signing out there, I haven't been able to get with Rick on that and see what they decided. We're just trying to get, get people slowed down a little bit before they actually get to the twenty-five, go ahead, Peter.
I was just gonna say, in addition to a speed limit sign, we might put up a, uh, blind entry sign, just to let people know that there's something that could be going on on the other side of the crest of that hill, just to alert them to entering traffic from the cemetery.
Yeah, yep, and, and we can, we can do what we need to, um, within the city limits, so if we wanna think about put, putting up an additional sign somewhere in there, we certainly can, um, but I know we, we definitely, the main goal is to get something else out on the highway to get traffic slowed down as well, so as, as soon as I hear from Lincoln County on that, I can all keep you guys updated. Um, since we're talking about Lincoln County, I'll skip ahead here, one, um, we applied to Lincoln County Commissioners for, um, a contract regarding the building inspection services a while back, and that has been, uh, approved by Lincoln County Commissioners, and we are now officially contracted with them to provide our building inspection services, so the Lincoln County Building Inspector will take care of everything within the City of Harrington going forward. Um, I know we talked about the money split and all that before, but that, it has been approved, and everything going forward, uh, as long as that contract is in place, will be through Lincoln County. Justin, you'd mentioned something about asphalt patching, um, we have, um, we have done our asphalt patching, we, um, I can let Scott talk a little bit about that if he wants, but we, we've got the holes that we had open, uh, they were prepped, we, we actually, uh, borrowed a saw, uh, uh, saw from the City of Davenport, uh, let us use that to cut them out square and get them all prepped, um, and then they, um, Scott and Charlie pulled asphalt, uh, late last week, and a little bit Monday as well, and got those patches all filled in, um, used a little bit more than we thought it was going to originally, but, um, yeah. Scott, do you have anything to add on the asphalt stuff while we're there? Maybe he's not with.
Yeah, we.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. We, we got, uh, a lot of asphalt laid, um, it went pretty well, truck ran great, we rented a roller from, from, uh, United Rentals, and it was returned, um, that's about, there's still more patching we could do, but, uh, time doesn't allow us to do it, I guess.
We got the, the, the big, big water leak holes fixed that where we needed to, at least in the travel, travel path of the roadways, um.
Yeah, everything that we've had open for, it's been over a year, it's all been patched, and it looks good, it's good and smooth, and it's all done.
Great, thank you. Did you have anything else, any other questions on that, Justin, or just kind of an update of where we were at with it?
Um, yeah, one more, I guess, uh, okay, I was brought up, somebody pointed out to me, Nathan, I talked to you about it, but I would caution the city from a liability standpoint of hiring people that are under the age of eighteen to work around that heavy equipment, I don't know, I don't know personally the, the labor laws in Washington State, but having a, somebody who's under eighteen out there, um, I think just brings added risk and liability to the city, so I would just respectfully ask that next time you guys go out to hire somebody that you just don't hire a minor, you know, for that kind of heavy equipment work, um, it, I, I just see a lot of liability issues that we might be responsible for that insurance might not cover because we were not doing it that way, so.
Yeah, yep, and I, I wanna check into it to make sure that I do know the, the laws and rules on that, and, uh, make sure next time going forward that we can find somebody a little bit further in advance too, to make sure that we have that nailed down. Okay, um.
Scott, it's, it's really hard to find anybody that wants to work in this area, it's tough to do, but we'll keep that in mind, thank you.
Yeah, I think just going forward, we just need to plan it out a little bit more, more in advance, and make sure that we have it nailed down, so we have a good timeframe, and we can, we're able to, be able to get somebody.
I have a question, this is Peter.
Go ahead, Peter.
Uh, subsequent to Justin's, uh, question, uh, I saw some of the workers on South First Avenue, I think yesterday, filling potholes, uh, is it the case that the, one or more of those workers was of minority age, and were they hired by the city individually, or were they part of the company that brought the, uh, hot tub in?
Um, I'm not a, on South First. So we were done.
By the water tank.
Yeah, no, Peter, it was, uh, somebody we hired, and he was of age to hire, and everything was all kosher there.
I guess I didn't understand, Scott.
So we hired a gentleman to help us patch, and he was over eighteen at that time by the water tower.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
They look pretty young.
Okay, any, any other questions or anything, that's what I had for the mayor update, um, any, any questions or anything, uh, we did have another, I guess I do have one more, so we did have another light pole go down, um, right here on Third Street, and we're in the works of getting that put through insurance, and getting that replaced and put up, so we got the, um, we got the other three replaced finally after quite a substantial time, and then we had, I think it was within that same week, another one go down, but we will, uh, follow the same process we did last time to get that put back up. And that is all I have for an update, unless you guys have any other questions.
How did that pole go down?
I don't, I actually don't know that, Scott, the door came open on a trailer, is that correct, somebody was pulling a trailer, and the door had come open and hit that light pole?
Yeah, contractor working on the hotel up there, uh, um, he'd actually lost, uh, a couple tools when he left his residence, door come open on his trailer, and when he pulled up, the door actually hooked the pole and knocked it down.
So we'd have quite a run on them. Yeah, go ahead.
I have one more question, too, so earlier this year, this summer, there was a, uh, somebody had pulled a fire, or, uh, pulled a, a power pole off over at the elevator or somebody, and the, the power lines went down and, and, uh, hit the sidewalk, and obviously caused some damage to the city sidewalk, are we, where are we at with that?
Uh, that is a good question, Scott or Janice, do you?
I contacted the gentleman that had the incident with the power pole, and he's supposed to email his insurance information through the city hall, I don't know if he's done it yet, but he's been contacted, and I've gotta get a cement contractor down to look at it and see what they can do, I was gonna call Cisco Concrete, um, during the area quite often, and I'm gonna have them look at it.
Has that information been sent to you, Janice? Janice, have you received that information from that individual yet, the insurance, uh, information?
No, I have not received the email yet.
Okay.
But I know that, I know that the gentleman's been contacted.
Okay.
Well, Nathan, this is Justin, I just would suggest again, that was over three months ago, um, that now we're gonna go into winter, I don't, I know one of the Cisco guys lives here, that's fine, but, um, I mean, we follow the light pole path, it's, it's gonna be maybe ten months, so I would just try to see if we, if we're gonna wait for that person, maybe to call them back and ask them, because the longer we wait, it, it just keeps hanging out there.
Yeah, make a second attempt to get that information, get going on it. Okay, I'll make a note on that, uh, Scott, will you contact that person again when you get a chance, uh, this week? I'll note it down here, Justin, we'll get, we'll get moving on it. Okay, anything else? That's all I had. Okay, well, uh, I don't hear anything else, let's move on to the next agenda item, um, declaring the antique fire truck surplus, uh, is that something you added as well, Justin? I know I wanted to talk about it as well, but I, I didn't actually add it to the agenda.
I, I don't believe I did either.
Okay, um, maybe I did put it on there. So we've talked, I know it was talked about quite a bit before, um, I took office as well, but we've, uh, we've sold the city pumper to the fire district, and, uh, still have, um, our nineteen forty-six Mack fire truck that we had planned on getting rid of, I don't know if it Dylan did, or I know Justin, you had it in there as well, but I wanted to, uh, go ahead and make sure that that was declared surplus, uh, by the city council and take a vote on that, we, it may have been done in the past, but I wanted to make sure, that's one of the first steps to actually, uh, physically surplus that truck, is to declare it surplus, so I wanted to hear any discussion, and then be able to, uh, entertain a motion to declare it surplus, to see if you guys had anything to add or any questions on that.
This is Peter, I have a question, do we, one of two questions, do we have any idea what the market value of the fire truck is?
I've done a little bit of research, Peter, um, I, I don't have a real hard number for you, I've seen anywhere from, uh, poor condition trucks of similar, um, similar trucks from. from maybe two thousand dollars all the way up to some that are, have been, uh, you know, restored almost up to upwards of fifteen to twenty thousand, so an actual number for value, no. Uh, I would say the ones that I've seen that are most similar to the condition that our truck is in, um, maybe around the five to ten thousand dollar range. And, uh, so it just kind of depends, but I do not have an actual hard number that I can give you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Real, real question, Peter, or Nathan, is for the budget purposes, for the last few years in the budget, we had a figure of ten thousand dollars, which was based on some research that Scott's done either with Dylan or the year that I was the mayor, so.
Okay. Yes, well, well, go ahead, Peter.
I have another question. Uh, what, uh, processes do we put into motion? If we declare it surplus, what does it compel us to do, anything?
Yeah, so the, just declaring it surplus is kind of the first step, um, and allowing us to actually physically surplus it, so there's some steps that we have to go through, uh, to be able to sell it or to put it at auction or whatever we decide to do, that's, that's just compelling us to vote on it and allowing, um, the city council to say, yes, this, this is surplus, we don't need it, um, we're willing to get rid of it, and then after that, we can set terms on exactly how we want to get rid of it. I just wanted to, want to make sure that we had that current, that it was declared surplus, I think, uh, Justin and I had talked about it and he's, we don't know, it could have been done in the past at some point, but we wanted to, if it has been, we'll redo it, and if it has not been, then we wanted to do it now so that we could move forward with that process.
Okay, thank you. Well, I would move that the antique fire truck that belongs to the city of Harrington be declared surplus property.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion on that? Okay, hearing none. I would, uh, ask for all the council members to approve by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, council, motion passes four zero one. You want to be recorded, David? Okay, thank you. Okay, well, uh, I'll keep you guys updated on that and we'll, we'll move forward on that as soon as, uh, I'll try to get some good, uh, prices together, maybe of some similar trucks, and then we can move forward with how we actually want to surplus that truck. Um, next agenda item is update on the CARES Act funding, um, I'm actually, Janice, if you would, jump in there a little bit for me and, uh, if you would go through that a little bit for me, I do have some figures here, if I can find them in my desk, or on my desk. Um, but I know we had some, want to figure out how much we've spent to date, um, some future planned expenditures, and, uh, maybe go through the list of awarded businesses that EDC had chosen for us. Janice, I know you gave me a list, what did I do with it?
I'm not sure.
Uh, Justin, I know, did you have some question on, uh, future expenditures for some of the money remaining, did you want to talk about that? I'm gonna try and find what Janice gave me here.
I know, I just wanted to see where, uh, where things are at. And that was, my question originally came out before Janice provided this list of the grant recipients, so I wanted to see, make sure that we were gonna be able to spend, uh, our allocated money before this deadline was my biggest concern.
Okay. Yeah, and I agree, I think we had somewhere around around, uh, ten thousand dollars left, and so we had originally had, uh, twenty-five thousand and got awarded additional five thousand, um, obviously, uh, seventeen, five went to businesses. Um, and you guys should have a list of those businesses that were awarded, uh, those grants. And, and we've had some small expenditures for Plexiglas and some other stuff, um, that we've already purchased, but we do have a pretty good, uh, chunk of change left, um, that we need to, we need to probably buckle down and get some ideas or some things to spend that on, uh, going forward. I do know the one thing that I, the one other thing that I'd, uh, interject real quick on that is it's just the physical ability to purchase some things, so we obviously have a, um, Office Depot card and some accounts, uh, certain places, but Janice brought to my attention, you know, it's, that's a pretty good chunk of change, so going forward, um, we, not only do we need to spend that money and find some useful uh, items to purchase or services or whatever it may be, but need to have a, maybe a little bit of a plan on how we're gonna do that. So if we buy some, uh, a big chunk of electronics or whatever we choose to do, I don't want to put that all on, um, a personal card or any other means, you know, that's, that's a lot of money to spend in a short, a short amount of time, so I thought I'd kind of kick that idea around of how we would physically be able to spend that money.
Well, Nathan, this is Justin again, have we, have we, on the last, um, city council meeting, uh, the regular meeting, we approved the purchase of a laptop and printer for, for the clerk, is that, has that been done already?
The printer, uh, has been purchased, the computer has, has not been, um, so we checked through our office deep, our Office Depot account and, uh, they didn't have the computer at the time, so we're, we'd either have to just put that on a personal card or wait till they get it, but I don't know the timeline on when they would be able to restock that, so, no, the, the, the computer itself has not been purchased, but the printer, uh, has been.
I would say generally that, I know there's been opposition to the city getting a credit card, but I would hope maybe we could get a debit card, cause having to do electronics purchases through Office Depot is particularly frustrating. Their selection is limited, their prices are not very good. And when we bought our three copies of Office for a substantial amount of money, they send us activation codes for Xbox game pass for PC, which we're still trying to get resolved. So, um, if we had a debit card, we could buy from more competent vendors, just my two cents.
Yeah, I agree, um, I don't, I need to talk to Mike as well on the.
On, on the debit card thing, I think they're very specific, I know the auditors are very, I mean, they're not gonna tell us what to do, but they're very, I, I, I believe they were very anti-debit card from an audit standpoint, because the money can go away, the money can be sent really fast. There's fraud or something, we're on a credit card, there's a little bit more, um, I don't, I don't know if there's more opportunity to get that back versus a debit card, so I know that's one thing in the past, that they were, that the auditors weren't anti-credit card, that's been a city thing, but the auditors were anti-debit card.
Okay. That's pretty tough, um, I mean, a little, you know, smaller purchases is not too big of a deal, but I, I mean, we're talking ten thousand bucks in the next month and a half, you know, by that deadline, I just, we need some other means to make sure that we can do that in a timely manner. I do know that the, you don't necessarily have to have that item, but the, the expense does need to be incurred by November thirty-first, so we definitely, uh, need to work on finding some other means of purchasing other than the places that we have accounts.
Can you, can you ask US Bank about, I mean, we have obviously bank accounts there, uh, to have a, I mean, it's something, the council probably needs to to approve, but at the same time, I mean, to, to talk to them to see about having something, you know, either a credit card and, you know, again, just because the, the auditors don't, I mean, I think we could call, to call the auditors back and say, let them know, uh, or maybe talk to them and get, ask for some guidance from them. Uh, maybe that stance has changed with a different auditor, but, um, I mean, I think we bring up a good, we have valid reasons for needing something like that. And then, um, you know, I mean, it's just, yeah, it's been an issue for like, a lot of things are changing now, people don't just take checks, so they don't allow us to do that, or they can't, you know, you can't say, please bill me and we're, they're gonna accept it, a lot of businesses just don't do that anymore like they used to, so we do need to, the city does need to be brought up to twenty-first century or even twentieth century, um, financial tool, so, I don't know, I mean, you can call the auditors office and ask them for some guidance, or I would also recommend maybe then trying to reach out to the, to the US Bank and seeing what, what they have, or what their options are.
Okay. Yeah, I agree, I think we can do that and I think we should, um, even if, if it's temporary or if it's, uh, you know, I'd like to have something available like that to us going forward. Just, just for these big purchases, I mean, if we don't, if we don't have an account somewhere, it can be, it can be kind of a hassle, you know, some places will write us an invoice and then we can pay, but there's a lot of places that even as a government entity, uh, won't do that for us, so uh, Janice and myself can check in on that, um, and see what we can, see what.
Nathan, this is Justin too, on that would be, maybe we have a special council meeting before the next meeting, because if you have to apply, I mean, one, it's just, well, once you get the information, you can share it with the council, but the time it takes to get that approved or in the mail from the bank side, maybe that, you know, we might be cutting it too close.
Yeah, I agree.
We'd schedule a November meeting, so might have to have a, a special meeting in between to, to deal with that.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll work on that, get going on that as quickly as we can, um, I, the other thing I'd ask from council is maybe other, um, I know we talked about it, uh, a little bit, maybe it might have been two months ago or even three. Um, just on some other ideas, um, for that money, um, is there anything new that's came to mind or, or maybe Janice, if you have anything that you can interject that you think that we might need, um, to use that money on?
Well, have we made, this is Justin, have we made a decision, we've talked about like, whether they were laptops or tablets for the council, I mean, is there? I mean, I guess we, we've talked about that, I don't know what, I don't know if we've actually voted or have given you like a straw poll even of what we've, if the council's in agreement or not, but those are things that we talked about probably two, at least two meetings ago, two regular scheduled meetings ago.
Yeah. I know that we had some, some people on board with, uh, you know, some tablets or something of that nature for the council, um, and I think maybe there was a little bit of opposition to it, but um, I, I, I would be in favor of that, I mean, I think that doing something like that allows people not to have to, one, use their personal stuff and two, um, it's, has a good solid way to communicate and all be on the same page as far as uh, electronics and communication and, and sharing, uh, documents and anything else that's included there. Um, Stephen knows my technical abilities, so he could chime in if, if he chooses to at any point, but yeah, absolutely.
I, I think Zoom would be a good, a good investment for us, even if it's on a month. I mean, we've, we've been in COVID now, I mean, we've been, for COVID stuff, we've been meeting remotely for I think seven months now, maybe, and I don't know when that's gonna end, but even if we buy, we, we invest in Zoom for even one or two months at a time, we started it now, we can, you know, I don't think there's a subscription to it, but then we can at least, we could have had a paid for this meeting too, so uh, I would say Zoom should be on the top of our, even if it's one meeting at a time.
No, I, I think the Zoom stuff's gonna happen. What has delayed it is we had a really difficult time trying to get anyone who could tell us whether we could prepay a subscription. Cause Zoom allows you to do that. But before we went off and did something like that, we wanted to check to make sure that was kosher with the funds. And eventually they finally got back to us, the gal was supposed to have the answer to that question, didn't respond for the longest time, not, not Margie, but some other, um, lady. And, uh, in the end, they said, no. It has to be, like, you, you have to basically use the minimum duration of subscription that you can get. So that makes, you know, sure we could cover one month of Zoom with CARES funds, which is gonna be like fifteen bucks, no big deal. But we can't do like a yearly subscription to Zoom or even multi-year. So that's what we were kind of waiting on with that, I think at this point, that now the next question is, is that Zoom expects a credit card? So we're kind of back to that same deal.
Yeah, and for something, the Zoom's a small amount, I mean, that's something that I can personally put on my card and being reimbursed as long as, I mean, the council's gonna see that reimbursement, you know, for, you know, at least, at least two months or, or whatever we end up doing, but if the council's fine with that reimbursement being made, that's, that's a small enough amount, that's not a big deal, it's just, I was concerned with the, if we have four or five thousand or ten thousand dollars worth, go out, I mean, I don't, I don't expect anyone to put that on their, in, out of their personal, personal account or banking, so um, if we can, Zoom's easy, we can, we can get that purchased and, and, uh, we're going forth, forward with that, but I'd say anything, try to come up with, uh, some solid ideas for anything else that we want to purchase with that fund, with those funds.
So I'll say two things real quick, one, I think we should schedule a special meeting. I think there's gonna be a fair amount to discuss there, both about what expenditures we can make before the end of next month, and then also to discuss what we find out about credit card stuff. So, there's that. Uh, the other thing that I want to mention real quick, and this doesn't have a lot to do with the CARES funds, because I think there's the intent that this would go on beyond the duration of the CARES funds. Um, however, we could pay for a month or two with it. Um, so it is a little bit related. Is the concept of putting up a, a city, City of Harrington city website, and I, I make that distinction to say this would have no desire to compete with the site that Karen Robertson has up. This would not be about representing Harrington's businesses. Or like they have a Lions Club page, this would not be about that, at least not in my view, I guess the council could discuss this, but in my view, this would be exclusively for the business of the city of Harrington. And we would try to be as collaborative and supportive of what Karen has already done as possible. But it would allow us to do two things particularly that I think are of interest. Uh, posting files and, and meeting recordings and stuff that would be of interest to the public, so that there's direct access without having to do a request for information. And then also to allow us to have, uh, city email addresses. So, uh, the, the cost of this would not be highly significant, it'd be like five bucks a month. And as a separate consideration, we've been looking at, there might be opportunities to prune at least that much and possibly multiple times that much off of our, uh, Sentry Link bill. By cleaning up some phone lines that may not be necessary any longer. So, as far as an ongoing expense, I think we could easily pay for this out of things that we're not currently using very well. But, uh, for the ten bucks that would constitute two months, I guess we could charge that to CARES as well.
Okay, yeah, I, I agree with you, Stephen, I know we've, uh, talked about it quite a bit, I'd really like to get some of the email and the, and the website and anything like that up to date and, and smooth out a little bit, so everything's working in conjunction with each other and on the same page. Does anyone have any more thoughts on the, on the tablets or computers for council members, uh, for email and meetings, uh, anything other kind of in, in the electronics, uh, department for the CARES Act funding?
This is David, I concur with, uh, Congressman Hardy. It's a good idea, I think as soon as we can set up a special meeting or, or so, uh, or whatever to, uh, discuss this, it would behoove us to do so.
Okay. Do we want to?
I'd, I'd agree with the two of them as well.
Okay.
Steven. Steven.
Do we wanna try to set up, set that date now, or do we wanna do that, uh, maybe tomorrow or later, later time? I mean, I don't wanna push it off a week by any means, but I don't know if everybody's got calendars in front of them, if we can set that date now or if we should just wait?
What is our minimum time limit to do so? Nathan?
So, special meetings, I believe, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe special meetings only have to be twenty-four hours in advance notice, but it, um, I would say a couple of days, just to be safe.
Okay. Well, I'm open to anything. I don't know what the rest of the council would think, but I'm open.
Okay, well-
This week and next.
I'm sorry, Peter, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
I was just saying, my schedule is open this week, the remainder of this week, and follow up next week up until Friday.
Okay. Well, just in, in lieu of moving things along tonight, um, I'll, I'll shoot out maybe a couple of dates and times by email and see if we can get something together. That way we don't have to try to figure it out at this meeting. But I'll do that either later, uh, tonight or in the morning, and we can get a date set up. Um, if you guys, too, when I send that email out, if you guys have any ideas or anything that you wanna run by me or, or talk about before then, go ahead and get ahold of me, but- Okay, um, let's move on to the 2021 budget discussion. Um, kind of allow the council members to, uh, give some input on going forward with the budget process for 2021, um, ideas, thoughts, uh, processes, likes, dislikes, anything like that. Um, Justin's definitely got a little bit of upper hand here, just cause he's done it. He's been through it, uh, as mayor before, and I have not, but I thought we'd just kinda open that up and, and talk budget.
This is Justin. So, so Nathan, so Steven and I are on the Budget Committee, so we met a couple weeks ago with Nathan, just to open up the budget, see what we were, you know, open up the books, I guess, to, to see what we might be looking at and just, again, like Nathan said, some general ideas. Um, you know, when I took that over, I, I didn't have, I worked with Bunny quite a bit on it and she, and she wasn't coming on helping me do that, but, um, we, the budget typically doesn't, unless the city's really changing anything, it's not necessarily quote unquote a big deal. Um, but obviously the last several years, uh, we've had a couple expenditures. You know, we, we acquired the, the building that was across the street, the McGregor Building. Uh, we also had, um, the, uh, um, oh, we, we hired the lawn care service, you know, in lieu of, we looked at, we analyzed the, um, the cost feasibility analysis of the lawn mower versus the lawn mowing service for the cemetery in the park. And so I think, um, you know, the water meter, the water bills, uh, or the utility rates the city charges has been a big topic, uh, and maybe continue to be. So, those are things, uh, I do believe we got a list in our packet two of several public works items that, um, were presented to us this week for consideration. Um, so if you guys see the, the list for budget suggestions, there's several items, one, two, three, four, at least four items on here that say that they're, the city is currently using Scott's personal stuff. And so this is the first time that I'd ever, uh, seen that or known that as a council member, uh, and either as a council member or as a mayor. So, um, I would say that those are probably high priority items, but, um, we need to probably go through this, you know, and, and I think I should step back to a second with Nathan is bringing this stuff up now so that we can have a budget workshop ahead of the next council meeting in order for, for Nathan to, to bring a budget to the, to the council to, to consider, uh, in November, which then will get hashed out more, and then we'll have a budget hearing and a budget adoption in December. But, um, so a lot of the things that we need to, you know, I, to look at to say, what is important to us? What is not, you know, what's a little bit less important to us? What do we need? Uh, what are needs and wants? What are must haves type of thing? Um, so, that's what I, so far what we've kinda, that's where the, the Budget Committee kinda started with, but obviously, um, you know, having the council input is, I think is important, cause you guys are obviously talking to the, you know, as council members, we're all talking to citizens and what they, they're telling us things that they like or don't like, and they don't wanna spend or they do wanna spend things on. So, um, I think it's, you know, if we can throw those ideas out now, uh, so that we can, when we have that budget workshop, we can kinda, kinda fine tune some of those things. Um, so I'll stop there for now, but then I'll, I'll start, pack up what I talk about the water meters to.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Um, yeah, so I'm kinda open to any discussion at this point. I, I do agree, I don't know if we wanna have a, a budget workshop the same night that we do our other special meeting for our CRF funds, or if we wanna split those up or however, but I thought I'd just kinda begin that process of, uh, opening up discussion to the council and, and, uh, see if you guys had any, had anything that you wanted to talk about at this point, uh, going into making that 2021 budget.
Real quick, Nathan, this is Justin. Sorry. So, to what you just said though, I would suggest having them separate, because as a, as a council workshop, as a budget workshop, we do not need a quorum or, you know, uh, it's open to the public too. There's no minutes being taken. It's more of just an open workshop. It's not quote unquote official.
Right.
So, it's not necessarily tied to a special meeting that may or may not have quorum that might screw things up. So, that's just-
Yeah, no, that's a good point. I appreciate that. We, I think we should do it separate just because of that point. So, well, I'll shoot out some dates for that as well, uh, in the same email, but as far as making a different date. So, thank you. Appreciate that. Anything else from the rest of the council? What do you guys think? And have any, any discussion at this time on that? Or do you wanna wait till that workshop? Any question on the list that was provided?
Nathan, this is David. I do-
Yeah, go ahead.
The list is, who made it up and come up with the figures is always wondering?
Um, this was Scott and Charlie's list. Um, just kinda pressed upon both of them the importance of having something to this nature of, uh, um, the figures, I don't know, uh, exactly how those were concluded, but I just definitely wanted a list at least of, uh, wants and, and needs. Um, some of this, you know, obviously is both of those, but this was, this was made up by Scott and Charlie and provided to me.
I'm kinda questioning, where's the nineteen ninety Chevy pickup? Am I missing a pickup around town or?
Well, there's, there was a little confusion on that actually, so that, there is a missing pick, it's not missing. There's a pickup that you may have not seen. That is, um, uh, over at Harrington Truck and Auto. So, I had asked about that and thought that, um, Scott had told me that it was sold. And I said, okay, so we don't own that pickup anymore, so I wasn't worried about it. And then I saw that on this list as well, and I said, well, I, I thought we got rid of that. And he said, oh, no. I thought, Scott thought I was talking about an older pickup that they had in fact sold, the Harrington Truck and Auto. So, the one that is listed here is inside the fence, uh, they were gonna replace an engine on it years ago, and it never happened, so it's just been sitting there since.
Well, my only concern with some of this older stuff is that, you know, instead of putting lipstick on something that we maybe budgeted for a nicer, uh, rig, a vehicle.
Yeah.
More-
Update a little bit.
Yeah. Maybe with, you know, different, you know, different work box on it and stuff and, uh, you know, buying a brand new one's probably out of the question. I mean, that's just not gonna happen. But there are others that, you know, maybe with the crane on the back, something that, you know, help them out with certain things. Um, you know, something to discuss that's around, because I know just buying engines for, you know, just putting lipstick on a pig, you know?
Yeah.
You could probably do it, but they're out there dilapidated. Just one thing leads to another. And the next question is the laptop computer. Is that, that is strictly for the maintenance, uh, personnel? Or that's not, you know, that didn't have anything to do with, uh, the clerk or in-house there or?
Correct. This, this was solely the maintenance, the maintenance department list. Um, we do have a computer here. Scott, are you still on with us?
Yes, sir, I am. I'm sorry, my phone went off.
Nope, you're good. Um-
We have a laptop at the City Hall that we got donated by Avista, which would be plenty good enough for us if we can get, uh, Windows, Microsoft and all that on it.
Okay. What, uh, what was the main goal of that laptop, of using that laptop? Just kinda explain it to council, I guess? Your thought process there?
Between emails and, um, not having to go to the City Hall, we could stay out the lagoons with it and do some of our DMR paperwork. That's my plan anyway. I don't know if it'll work out, but that's the plan.
Well, that sounds like a good plan. It could leave something at the station there. And, uh, you know, it would enhance your, your job, you know, instead of, I don't know what you're doing now, but anything to increase, um, efficiency is, you know, by me. And I concur with Justin. Uh, a lot of stuff here, Scotty, that's a question for you, you're using your own stuff. That should probably, that's a policy the city, the council shouldn't ever allow. I mean, that just creates, that's not acceptable in my book, if we, you know, need to buy those tools. And, and that's why I asked early on, some time ago, when we met in person, well, the only time we did, is to compile a list of what's the inventory, what do we have and what do we need? So, you know, there's fourteen items here, but I mean, it's just everything. I mean, I don't see no snow removal equipment. I don't see any, anything else. In my opinion, there's a lot of stuff missing here. And I guess that we could work on that later, but definitely we should not have employees using, wearing out their own stuff. And that's, I, it should be addressed as soon as we can, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, I just, uh, like, I, I got a welder down there and we're using my compressor, cause our city compressor was just too small and too old. Um, it's basi- mainly for, you know, we're welding stuff. We welded all the crosses for the cemetery and we don't have a welder anymore and it's just-
Well, you're talking, Scott, are you talking about a stationary? Well, you're not talking about a portable welder or anything like, this is a-
It's a Miller wire feed welder.
Uh-huh.
And, and it's down there at shop and it's, it's one that I, we, we have a, we have an old, uh, buzz box. I call it a buzz box.
Uh-huh.
Down there that it, it doesn't, doesn't work anymore like it should, so we've been using mine.
I see.
We tried to weld snow plow with it and everything that we welded with it broke.
Uh-huh. So, you're saying it needs to be welded, no, I'm just kidding. I understand. They, they get old and, and they don't work anymore. Um, I, I do wanna add too that we should, given this, uh, city municipality here, we should be able to get out for bids and, and get some fairly attractive prices or, you know, some, the common Joe's gonna pay more. We, we should get a credit reduction, uh, should Ethan knows, I mean, gee, you guys know what I'm talking about. Should be able to get on a state bid or something and get a lot of these, uh, equipment, um, and so forth and so on at a discount, a substantial discounted price. And, um, so we gotta keep that in mind as well. So-
Yeah, I think that's a-
You come up with it?
Go ahead. Oh, I, I think that's a good idea. Some of the, the higher budget items especially, I think when we, if we budget for some of them, whether we have the money or we're gonna save or what, however that becomes to, uh, to go out to bid or whatever the process is there that we, we can or need to go to, to, to try to get some of, like you said, better prices on stuff.
Uh-huh. Okay.
And that, that whole prices on the list that I submitted, that was a, that was a two-year-old list and, and I, uh, you know, I was gonna submit it last year when Justin was mayor and I just didn't do it because it just didn't sound like anything was gonna fly, so I just didn't do it. And, and some of those numbers or guestimates, um, we'll have to address them as they come up. The only, I, I, I understand it. I just wanted to make sure that we're on the right page, because I just bought a, a riding lawnmower from John Deere this, this summer. And I'm talking to the guy I know, the salesman and stuff, and had it been a municipality or something, there would've been a heck of a savings on that, quite a substantial reduction in price. So-
And that's, that's very true, David. It can be. We get, we get government assistance from the dealers, from the factory to begin with.
Uh-huh.
Okay, well, I, the one other thing I'd say to you, Scott, too, is to, is to, if, you know, other things come up, you know, we're going through this process to, you know, add to this list. Um, you know, if you find stuff, like David mentioned, some snowplow stuff or whatever, um, just going forward, just to make sure to keep building on this list, especially things that are, you know, repairs or stuff that we use a lot, tobacco, the snowplow, stuff like that, just to keep moving on that. If this list is two pages long, even better.
Yeah, I, we're dealing with the state, uh, with their surplus property right now for a, a plow unit that fits on our truck. It's absolutely almost brand new and it's been sitting down at Sprague for fifteen use that I know of, and we're on the state, um, bid list now, and it looks like we could get it very easily for scrap value around a hundred bucks, and we're working on that right now. But it'll replace the, the plow head unit off our dump truck. It's absolutely perfect.
Okay.
This is Justin. I don't, I don't see that listed on our list, so if we're, if it's not on our list, then why are we working on it?
Is that something that needs to be added to the list, Justin?
I, I guess. I mean, I don't, I mean, it's great that there are cheap plow heads that's available from the state, but if we don't need it, then why would we, it doesn't matter how cheap it is, it doesn't, it's not worth, I mean, if we need something, then sure, but if we don't need it, but it's just a good deal, it's not really a good deal type of thing. If we need, we could spend that money on, on getting one of these other things done, I think that would be fine, but if, if it's necessary, um, then I would say, yeah, like, put it on the list. But we, I don't know that, I mean, they're out there looking at bidding on things that weren't even on our list that we don't even know about. I don't know that that's the smartest thing either, but that's just my opinion.
Well, uh, if I can interject, the, the plow that we've got now has some damage to it that needs to be fixed, some more welding on it. It would cost us more to do that than it would to buy this plow. And they offered it to us for a hundred dollars scrap value. If we can get it, I hope we can get it. I just don't know.
Yeah, I just, I think the only points being made there is just to make sure that it's on the list and it's something that we need. I mean, it, it sounds like that it is something that we need and it's probably a, you know, financially responsible thing to do, to get something that's in not good a shape for that cheap, just to make sure that it's actually on the list. So, say, you know, if we're saying, we need that line item that says, you know, snow, new snowplow or, or reconditioned snowplow or whatever, however that's worded, but just to make sure that that kinda stuff is on the list.
Is it too late, too late to add it to the list?
Absolutely not. I, I, I think there, um, I think there could be pages of, you know, needs and wants, and the stuff that we need is really stuff that should be looked at. So, if that's one of them, that should be on the list. No, I'd say you can add to this list at any time, and I encourage you to do that.
Well, I, I could ask you in writing, I'll do it, but it's, I'm assuming it's on the list now.
I can jot it down.
Please. And, and I, this is David. I recommend that Scotty, uh, you and Charlie or whatever, uh, keep a notepad and, and write down, uh, considers, or removal wants and wishes. And I, I do on my forte, I, I know this city truck is kinda dilapidated and ragtag, and if you can get a, a new plow and hitch and stuff for a hundred bucks, you're making a hell of a steal, because this one here has been nothing but a, well, it, it's, it's seen its better day.
has been nothing but a, well, it, it's seen its better days. So, in my opinion, uh, I think, uh, so whatever you can do going forward, I, I would suggest, not only on this list, but, I mean, just keep in mind the snow removal stuff as well, is when, when the snowballs hit us, we go, oops, we don't have this, we didn't have that, so.
Yep.
Um, I think whether I try, there's only questions on the prices. And, and I'm not trying to downgrade anything, but I'm just, you know, like I said, the biggest thing is, is like, uh, an engine for pickup and this. Uh, we've seen the city pickup and I know there's better options out there. I mean, yes, uh, you could probably run it till the wheels fall off, you know, but it's a kind of a ragtag in the, uh, rig anyways. And I, I think to enhance the city and, uh, your operation, uh, something to look at anyways. I mean, we don't have to buy, but definitely keep our eyes open and, uh, cause the government turns loose a lot of nice stuff. And it's, it's, uh, it's used, but very less, my, uh, less used, okay? It's, it's, it's old, but it's not old. It's, it's new old. Okay? They get rid of a lot of nice stuff, is what I'm trying to say. And it would fit our program, so, uh, that's all I gotta say and I yield the floor to everybody.
Thank you, David. I appreciate the comments there. We'll, uh, we'll keep moving forward, um, with this budget stuff, especially at the, at the budget workshop and that's, that's good conversation for that time, so. Unless anyone else has got any pressing questions or comments, uh, I think we'll turn it over and see if there's any citizen input, um, for, for anything regarding the budget. No comment. Okay, um, I know we had a different agenda item, agenda item on here, planned replacement of water meters that Justin kinda wanted to tie that in with the budget stuff, so I think I'll kinda give you the floor there, Justin, on that.
Oh, it's fine. We can just discuss it at the, at the budget workshop or-
Okay.
Another budget.
Alrighty.
Nathan, this is David.
Yeah.
I, I, I apologize. I'd like to back up just a, a bit here and, uh, why I didn't remember earlier. But being said, we're running, uh, just food for thought, uh, a vehicle for Scotty or whomever that runs these lab tests over creation to Davenport, Spokane, Cheney and all around. And we're driving this old tow that down the, I mean, wearing it out and something to keep up maybe a, I know it's a lot to ask, but a city vehicle. Whether it be for the mayor or a clerk business or, or Scotty, but, uh, another type of vehicle that's more economical and more fitting for the purpose.
Okay, yeah, I understand. So you're, you're talking maybe some, something that's not necessarily a work vehicle, but more of a shared, shared city vehicle that could go to trainings or, or something else?
Exactly.
Okay.
You know, I, I know that he has it, but it's, I know, you know, it's a lot, it's a Christmas list, wish list, but, uh, something more respectable and more economical, uh, more professional looking and, uh, you know, just, just better all, all, all around. I don't know, just a thought.
Yeah, no, absolutely. That's, that's really good discussion for when we meet again. I, I like that, so. We can definitely go on that subject a little bit more then. Thank you. Okay, water meter stuff's good. Um, we have some additions, uh, to the agenda, so let's, we got a pretty decent list of them, so. Um, Peter, you were the first one to, uh, speak up when we asked for additions, so I think I'll, I'll start with you. Uh, you had, I believe, three of them.
Yeah, the first one was a water bill. I was approached by a Harrington citizen who had very forcefully objected to the magnitude of his water bill. And I don't know what can be done except to have maybe, uh, Scotty and our water meter go up to the residence and, uh, check to see whether there's possibly could've been any error made. His water bill quadrupled in one month, so there's a reasonable possibility that there's an error.
Okay.
So, if Scotty could do that, I would be grateful.
Right, Peter, and I'm gonna try to address that tomorrow.
Uh, good.
It's, it, it could be a bad reading, but we also gotta look for water leaks on his end. And that's what I'm gonna do.
Please communicate to the citizen that it was discussed at the council meeting, if you would, Scotty.
Yes, sure, we can do that.
The second item I raised was the World War One memorial. And I was approached by another, a different citizen who's made the point, and quite forcefully, that, uh, he would like to see it moved from a personal residence where it's, as you probably all know, it's at the, in front of the old city hall. And he makes the point that that was a memorial that was given to the people of Harrington. And he would like to see it moved, if possible, to the city park or somewhere on public property.
Okay, um, the first, so the quick question I have about that, Justin, hopefully you can help me, um, was that, is that memorial actually, I had heard word that it was actually city property that was placed on personal property, or maybe, maybe, Peter, you know the answer to that? Can you elaborate on, on the memorial a little bit, I guess, on how that worked?
You talking to Justin or to Peter?
Uh, either one.
Uh, I would guess we should probably go back into the archives to see if there's any designation or any stipulation as to whom that memorial was dedicated or to, given.
I do know the, the city had went through a proclamation for that memorial, but as far as the actual physical, um, items, I don't, I don't know how that part works.
I don't know who owns it either.
And I can interject a little bit, uh, if you want.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
The, the memorial's been there for, you know, since, since I've been here. And it was, if, if, the, the property sold from the city to a, a citizen and then the citizen sold it again. And it's just been sitting there. And the current owner is, has been kinda addressing it. We're gonna have to figure out how to move it if we wanna move it.
So, but you're saying that the city doesn't own the physical item, I mean, the, the memorial itself then? It's, it's a personal, personally owned?
I think they, I think they did own the property that it was installed on at one point. I know they did own it. And then it was sold as the old city hall was sold when we moved downtown. And it's just been, it's sitting there since.
Is it not correct that if it was not excluded when the property was sold, that it is no longer city property?
You know, I don't think, I really don't think anybody, only, only thing that was addressed on that building was the, the actual bell. And the guy that bought the building sold the bell and, and Margaret Cooper's went to great extent to, uh, extremes to get the bell back and it's hanging on a bell tower in, uh, the little Chevron Park there. But other than that, I don't think anybody addressed the monument.
So it sounds like the monument is now private property and would be a question, to, to, to assert that it's not would require a proof from the title when that was transferred.
Is there any historical, uh, society involvement with this? Being some, uh, historical monument, um, any, well, I don't have the terminology for it, but, uh, precludes moving it or disturbing it, uh, anything like that? Anybody know anything about that, that thing?
One, this is Peter. I don't, can't answer that question, David, but, uh, it occurs to me that there's other formerly public property that may be attached to the, the building now and that is the emergency siren. It may, if, if it was sold to the owner upon purchase of that property, that may form a precedent, establish a precedent for, uh, transfer of public property to private ownership.
Well, it says- This is Justin. Stephen's correct and there would have to check the title. Um, I think the current property owner, uh, takes great pride in having that on his property. So, if, if it, if it never was addressed in, when it was transferred the first time and it has transferred again, uh, the current owner is the second owner since the city sold it, it, we would, the city would have to ask basically permission to move it, just like those, the Harrington, um, markers that are at the, you know, over at, um, the beginning of town by the gas station, the other gas station, uh, the north side. So, if, if the current property owner, if there's nothing on title and nothing excluded it from, you know, going back to the city or reverting to the city, something like that, then where the city would be at the, the heft of the, the property owner here, if, if they wanted to donate that back to the city or, or move it to somewhere else. So, um, first half is, to like Stephen's point, you have to find out about the title and then from there you can, the next steps can be happening, you know, if, if it is city-owned, uh, there's a, there's a, an exception in the title that, that remains to the city, then the city can do whatever it wants with it. It can tell the property owner that we're gonna, you know, exercise our rights. But if it doesn't say that, then it's a whole different set of steps that would have to be discussed or whatnot.
Okay.
I think that was, well said, Justin. Uh, I know there's, there's information in the title and the, the agreements with the current property owner about the siren and the operation of the siren, but I don't know if anything was mentioned about the memorial.
Well, it's something we can dig into, Peter, just to kinda answer your question or to, to address it, is to, uh, be able to dig into that with the, uh, with the county or wherever we need to, to see if there is anything in there and if so, what, what's it, uh, what does it say, so, um. I will make a note to do some research on that and get back to you as soon as I can, Peter.
Thank you.
Um...
Nathan, this is David. I had to step out a minute, but what, uh, this, this memorial, what, what's the beef about it? Somebody wants it or what's, why do we wanna move it or what's going on? I, I missed that part and I do apologize.
Just, we had a citizen, um, that was asking, um, to, to move the monument, um, from where it currently sits to a, a public property, to city property. And so we just discussed, uh, Justin kinda gave some input there on, on maybe how to go about it and what it, what it might include to do some research to see if that is in fact part of the property for the current property owner or if something was excluded when it was sold and the city owns it, or the memorial's owned, or exactly whose property it is and what can be done with it.
Okay, uh, very good. Thank you. And for the record, I really oppose moving it at all. That's my opinion going forward.
Okay, well, we're gonna, uh, I told Peter I'd do some research on it and try to figure it out. Um, I don't know anything about it, so I'm gonna have to do quite a bit of research and where I can to see what we need to do going forward, um, whether we even need to vote on, whether we can move it or who owns it or, or what's happening there, so. It'll just be kind of a research and update item. Okay, um, okay. Marge, are you still with us?
I am.
Okay, I think we are to that-
Nathan, real quick, Nathan-
Yeah.
Peter had item number three was the cell tower noise. I don't know if you wanna address it or not, but that was the third item.
Okay, I apologize.
Did I hear? Yeah, I raised it and I thought Justin did a good job of, uh, knocking the silt out from under that argument. The cell tower is not on public property, although it is an alleged nuisance to, uh, Harrington citizens, so on the basis of that, it may warrant looking into, but I went up to the citizen's property and I could not hear anything, but...
Okay, that was gonna be my one question that I had about it. Has anyone, including yourself, which you've already answered it, heard this alleged noise and, and I can say that I have not?
Nathan, this is Justin. So, I, I believe if it's, um, is it on, is it on, um, South First Street? Is that the, is that the, the person that's complaining?
North of the high school.
Oh, north of the high school.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know who the citizen is.
We've had, we've had complaints last year from a different citizen, uh, who had complaints about it too. Um, but, I'm, at that point, um, and Scott, I don't know if you were involved, I know Bunny and I had talked about it, but because it was, one, it was not in the city limit and two, it was, so it was in the county and then it was also on private property. And that property actually just transferred. They, somebody bought that ground that that tower sits on. Uh, it's, it's outside of our purview. I mean, there's FCC and other people that manage that and deal with that, so I think it's, we would, we would direct those people or, or any, any citizen to those agencies that, that approve it and that have those studies and that follow it. They, they would be the ones that, that regulate it, not-
Yeah.
Even though it's not-
I'd agree with you there, just, just kinda, we can give them to the proper authorities to take care of it. I'd agree. I don't think it's something that we, we not only need to deal with, but I don't think we can.
Agreed.
Sorry for skipping your third, third one there, Peter.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Uh, Nathan?
Yeah.
This is David. I somewhat disagree with the discussion. Uh, when, at the inception of that tower, there was a chance to, um, put in input for that and that somehow slipped. People didn't put in input to that or care, in my opinion. And two, I think as a talk, you can, like you guys are talking about, go to the agency and, uh, there's advocate groups that are for stuff like this, that are a nuisance next to a town and I'm surprised, I mean, I'm flabbergasted that they could build a tower that close to a school, that close to a, a populated area, number one. Number two, uh, I think the council could write, or the city is within its rights to file a, a nuisance claim or on behalf of the citizens or whatever, if deemed necessary to, to address the situation. Uh, obviously, there's, if there's been complaints about it, that there's something going on and, uh, that'd be my, that'd be our involvement is to these, um, advocates or these groups or whatever, uh, to express our concerns of it. Whether it does any good or not, I have no idea, but I-
I know when they usually do put those, those, have those meetings in the, um, put those towers up and stuff, it goes through the county, so I, I don't know how that would work with the city and the county and then two, who owns the tower or whatever else, but we, um, I guess we can do some research on that too and see, um, if, I guess, I'd be-
Justin, um, so I'm on the Lincoln County Planning Commission and we, we approve those, uh, the county, like you said, the county is the one that approves those. I was, that tower's been here longer than I've, I've been here six years. I think it was up right, either when we got here or right before. But, so there is, I don't, like David mentioned, there's a public comment period and all that stuff as well. Um, I don't know if it transacted for the, you know, how that went about for this thing, but maybe talking to Courtney, um, at the county would be that she's the one that's our liaison that deals with all that stuff. Um, if, if, if we think it's a, if it's our, if it's our, if we have a dog in the fight, I mean, we do have a citizen, um, but if, again, do we, does the city want, I mean, the city can maybe sign on to something or, but at the same time, do we have the resources and the dollars to, to fight that if it's not really the city's business?
Yeah. No, I agree.
I think it could be discussion, like David said, we can discuss it, we can bring it up and have it as a, as an, you know, an agenda item to talk about it, if we wanna do it. I, I don't, it doesn't bother me either, but I think there's probably, and I know the county and within the county, I think they put up two other ones, uh, one in Creston and a Wilbur. I went out and looked at the site before and again, there's a public comment period. Um, there's, you know, they have to have approval from the, um, the FAA because of the ho, uh, tower height and the fall distance and they have to have that. I mean, there's so many studies and, and things they have to meet that beyond me, but, I mean, somebody else does that. They have, you know, and right or wrong. else does that, they have, you know, and right or wrong, that, you know-
Yeah.
If it got erected, I would assume it got approved, so, um, that ship may have sailed, uh, when it got there, but, um, so, but I, maybe if we wanna do something, is to start with, you know, Courtney at the county, then she works, I mean, she's the liaison for that, and has worked with the planning commission and the commissioners to approve those things, um-
Yeah, no, I agree, and, and I, I can talk to Courtney, I mean, obviously, I'd, we're in the same office building, so that's something that I can do pretty easily, I'd only, and we can make it an agenda item, like you said, and talk about it, uh, in the future, I'd, having never heard it myself, or, or maybe other people haven't heard it either, um, have a little trouble fighting something that you, you can't hear, but that's here nor there, I guess, if, if there's a complaint, I can, I can go forward and, and see what the process is.
Uh, Nathan, this is David, and, and it's just a noise that happens during the wind. I know that the wind plays a part on structures of that nature.
Uh, no, it's-
I know, it's-
It's happening all the time.
Ah, I, I know that-
In the evenings, and I'm by it, and no, and no wind, I've heard it.
Really? Okay, 'cause, I was gonna say, sometimes they put on, um, well, they do it on aircraft, but they're for static, but, I mean, on towers, you know, different structures like that, they put on, uh, fans, or some to absorb or dissipate vibration harmonics and stuff, but I don't know if that's what's going on, if that's even possible, they might look into that, but, uh, that, that is something they do have done on, um, towers, is to break, uh, the herma- uh, you know, from whatever forces, wind, breeze, or, um, radiation, I don't know what's going on, but-
Okay.
I look into it, and, uh, you know, ask, uh, the guy that, uh, Justin referred to over there, and see if they've had any other towers, or anybody else complains about them.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I, I will, uh, I agree, I think we should, uh, do what we can here, I'll talk to Courtney, like I said, I'd, I'd, um, I work in the same office building as her, so I can, I can at least start there, like Justin suggested, and, and see what we can do.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Alrighty. Thank you, Peter, um, unless I'm missing another one, I now believe we're on to you, Marge. Uh, public comment.
Thank you, Nathan.
Yep.
Each council member took an oath of office to perform their duties to the best of their abilities. The city handbook states, under actions subject to disciplinary action, our success in providing excellent service to our citizens and maintaining good relationships with the community depends on our employees. We have therefore provided for your guidance, certain conduct which, if engaged in, would be detrimental to our objective, and could lead to disciplinary action, including discharge. The following specified conduct is illustrative and not comprehensive, misrepresentation or withholding pertinent facts, lying, making malicious faults or derogatory statements that are intended, or could reasonably be expected to damage the integrity or reputation of the city, or our employees, intentional falsification of records and paperwork. There is no point in having an oath of office if truth and honesty are not valued. I took offense at council justman's, Justin Slack's use of his office as the city councilman, or his bully pulpit, to assault my character, my writing ability, and my position as a city employee. I am referring to the news article I submitted to the Odessa Record of August 20th. Justin Slack ranted for five minutes at the September City Council meeting, making statements that were misstated, and were untrue, and he knew they were false. Since no one at the meeting was familiar with what I had written, and had been in the paper, except Mayor Pro Tem Stephen Hardy, who acknowledged that Slack misstated what I wrote, the council and the audience accepted what Slack said as true, when in fact it was not. Slack was not content in merely misstating what I had written, but went further to say that every week there are errors and misstatements, and absurd exaggeration. His behavior is an affront on the office of a council member. It is the same tactic which he used in January, February, and March, where he made exhaustive use of executive sessions by reiterating his misperception of the laws governing executive session. Then through repetition, he convinced the council to follow his advice. As further evidence that his rant last month was malicious is the fact that he made no attempt to contact me regarding what he believed to be errors, nor did he contact the Odessa Record. It appears he chose to use his previous position as mayor, and now his current position on the Harrington City Council, to expound with his well-known rhetoric and his intimidation tactics, to further his personal agenda at the disregard of his employees. He damaged my reputation as a reporter, historical writer, and librarian. He threatened my First Amendment rights, which if he were successful, would have threatened the public's rights by denying transparency in city government. He assaulted my character in the September 9th Public Council meeting. I expect a public apology in a city council meeting in a timely manner. I thank the body of the council for listening to the truth in regards to one of its members. Thank you very much, Nathan, for allowing me the time.
Welcome. So, the only two things that I would say to you, Marge, on the whole subject, um, is two things that I know for sure, a hundred percent fact, um, there's been numerous attempts, um, by not only, by more than one person, um, to the Odessa Record, um, and to the Times both, uh, to, one, try to correct errors that have been made unintentionally or intentionally, and second of all, I know that you have I, you and I have spoken about it personally, um, and I think it's just a matter of, and my, it's just opinion, it is my opinion, that it's just trying to make sure that everything, um, is correct, um, not a personal attack, that's-
It was a personal attack because he lied about what I wrote. I did not write that Harrington is growing COVID. That's simply not true. He knows it's not true, you know it's not true, and for sure, I know that Stephen knows that it's not true because he wrote me an email.
Okay. Can I say something real quick?
That goes, Stu.
For the record. Um, the, the email that I wrote, Marge, that's this, and I'm reading directly from it. "Thank you for your response and your gracious compliment. I think that Justin's concern was with the term quote-unquote 'growing it' from the quote that you provided, as coronavirus is not known to grow parentheses replicate un- parentheses in the sewer. Instead, the shed parentheses, and I believe dead, cells are found in the excretions. Quote-unquote 'growing it' can lead to the interpretation that the virus could be replicating and alive in the sewer system, therefore making the sewer system a distinct hazard, when I think your intent was to represent that quote 'growing' presence of coronavirus infections in Harrington could be detected by sewer testing. While I do see the opportunity for confusion, I assumed that you meant the latter."
That's an exact quote from what you sent me, that's correct.
Okay. So, just for the record, I didn't comment on the accuracy of Justin's statements in there.
You said that you could see how it could be misconstrued.
I said that, yes, I said that I, I could see how your statements could be misconstrued, but I did not say that Justin's interpretation was inaccurate, because I think that the way it was written could lead some people to have that interpretation, even though I personally understood what you meant.
And even though it, it did not state that Harrington is growing, it said to see if. So, you're leaving that part out also?
Well, I'm just reading the quote from the email I sent you.
I know what you're reading, that's your email, but what I wrote in the newspaper did not say Harrington is growing COVID.
No, I, and I don't-
It said to see if.
Correct. Correct.
So, so it's absolutely misleading that Justin would say that I had written that Harrington is growing it.
So, Marge, the one thing I would ask, I guess, on the subject, I know we've had some back and forth on it, a little bit, on articles, and the whole, the whole thing, um, what is the best and proper way, in your opinion, to, um, to go forward with making sure that things are not misconstrued, or, or, uh, false, or anything of that nature, to make sure that both sides are happy? What's written is what happened, and what happened is what gets written in the paper? That'd, that'd be my underlying question going forward.
So, you're saying that every week there's an error? Is that what you're saying also?
No. Nope. I'm asking to make sure that it does, that there's no question about it on either, on either side, that- Just to make sure that everybody's happy, what that process would entail.
I don't know what it's gonna take to make Justin happy.
Hey, Nathan?
Yeah.
It's Denise.
Good.
I have the article right here in my hands, and I'll skip down to the part where it says, "Hardy also said he had read that some cities were testing their sewers for coronavirus, and that maybe Harrington needed to see whether the city is growing it as a potential means of preceding a local outbreak of COVID-19." So, that is exact word for word that she put, and if you go back, and you listen to the tape, you will find, that is what is accurate.
Okay. I just wanna mitigate any, anything that goes on, um, to allow, for Marge, so you can, you can write, uh, articles, and go on with, and so that-
I have no intention of changing what I'm doing. You seem to still think that I did something wrong, and I didn't, it's Justin who rearranged the words to make it seem like I said something wrong.
So, Nathan, this is Justin here again, um, real quick, so Marge had just mentioned that I used the bully pulpit for meetings in January, February, and March of this year to have executive sessions. That is factually incorrect, because I was not at the March 2020 meeting, so I physically could not be there to do that. So, again, that's a minor detail, but that's factually incorrect, so, those are the, the things that I bring up every time that I see, when I see that, I can't help that that's what's written. If that's not what she's writing, that's, that's not my fault, you know, uh, like you mentioned, we have called the editor at the Cheney Free Press, Robert, Roger Hornak, and have tried to deal with that, um, so, but I, just for her to say that I was at the meeting and used the bully pulpit in executive session in March of 2020, did not physically exist, because I was physically not there, and I did not call into that meeting, I had an excuse absent, I was in Houston, Texas, for the entire week, and, so, I, I can't help that- Misstatements are misstatements, that's, that's really all I can say.
So, you'll challenge whether or not I, whether or not you were there in March, but you don't challenge the truth of the matter, which is that you use it as a bully pulpit?
So, Marge, Marge, the one time we did bring this up at a council meeting, I think it might have been in February, you told me that you would not be in a room, or you would not talk to me individually, one-on-one, because you were scared of me, so I have taken that-
And that's a lie, too. I did not, I did not say I was scared of you, absolutely did not say that.
So, I took what you told me, at the, at the public sitting hall, and I've chosen not to deal with you one-on-one, because that's what you asked, and I'm not, you know, that's what it is, that you, you were, you were, you could not, yeah, I, I do, and I don't think I'm paraphrasing here, uh, that you were scared of me, and you were not gonna be in a room with me, or talk to me one-on-one, so, I, again-
I said I would not be in a room alone with you.
Yeah.
But I did not say I was afraid of you. Who could be afraid of somebody like you?
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know, so, um, anyway, Nathan, that's what I have to say about it, I mean, I can, um, again, I, the, the things that, when they are misstatements, I don't know what to, that's why I keep bringing it up, because it, it represents the city, and so, or it misrepresents the city, so-
But it's okay to lie?
How do we, how do we fix this, then? What, what's the, again, I go back to my, my question of moving forward. What, what is your proposal to change? What, um, what, what's the, the process or the steps that you would like to see?
I would like to hear an apology from Justin for lying.
Going forward, how about, what do we do there? To make both side, to make both sides happy, about articles, about anything written?
I would appreciate, I would appreciate not being called a liar anymore.
I'm not calling you a liar, I'm telling the truth, which is that you don't seem to speak the truth.
Nathan, for me going, for me going forward, I'll just address every council member individually with information, and I won't bring it up in a public comment about inaccuracies, or whatever, I'll just address it with you, as the mayor, with the clerk, and any other council members, and then you guys can deal with it as you need to, but that way it won't be public, and nobody will be, um, felt like they're being personally attacked, or, or, their integrity, or whatever, it's being called into question.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment this time?
The only comment I have, Nathan, this is David, is I, I believe Miss Willack was, uh, wanting a public apology, and, uh, I appreciate both sides, but, uh, that might settle it, and let things lie as they are, you know, with a simple apology, or, is there something that we need to go to executive session and discuss in further detail? Just a thought, and I don't even know how we get to executive session with this multi-business coronavirus restrictions. Your thoughts? Are you?
Well, my only opinion on the whole subject matter, uh, is that we have personal opinions on both sides, and like you said, I respect both sides' opinions, um, and I, I guess, to be completely honest with you, I don't know where to go from here.
Well, the only thing my experience has been, I know it's tough attention with the knife, but, uh, a simple apology, right or indifferent, I think, um, would be myself, I think would be in order, and it would go on, uh, I know things, feelings, or such dynamics have played out here, but, uh, to put it at bay, and, and quell this, and to, uh, satisfy things, I, that's how I see it happening, and, uh, but-
David, David, this is Justin. Denise had just read, word for word, what I said, she read it word for word from the newspaper. That's what was stated, that's what I said. So, again, I'm not going to apologize for saying what was incorrectly done, either as a misstatement about what was happening at the city. So, I can't help that, and when I'm being called a liar-
That's simply not true.
Or when I, when I'm, when I'm being called a liar, or told that I lie, or that I don't tell the truth, those are all the same things, but the person who says that, says that I use a bully pulpit, and, and says that I was inaccur- inaccurately stated that I was at a meeting, I am not going to apologize for that. That's not a simple apology, David, that is, that is not, those, those are, I can't help it, that those are the inaccuracies that are there. I'm not going to apologize for inaccuracies. I would-
So, I'm going to executive session.
Okay, well, I, I feel like that's what we need to do to move forward, then, uh, if that's correct, and then, also, I'd, to answer your question, David, about the executive session, um, and with coronavirus stuff, I, I don't know how we're gonna do that, I don't know if we have to wait until we can meet, or, or what?
I think that, and I'm, I'm trying to look this up right now, so I'm trying to make sure we do this legally, and, and within the rules, but I, I believe that it is legal for the five of us to meet if we were to go down to City Hall. We cannot have a public meeting for things of public discourse where the-
We cannot have a public meeting for things of public discourse where the public would be coming in and putting us over the top of that limit, but I do believe, like, the city of Spokane has had their in-person meetings, and some cities have chosen to have in-person meetings, so for the five of us to go to city hall right now and have an executive session, I think would be legal, but I'm trying to look right now and, and verify the requirement.
My second question to that, Stephen, just because you're looking it up, um, and again, I don't wanna say something that I don't know for sure, are we, or Justin, maybe you could even elaborate, are we allowed to meet regardless, as long as the public has means to attend electronically? So say we met, and whether we wanted to executive session, or actually had a public meeting, but was able to be attended electronically is allowable? Or do they have to physically be able to be at the, at the city hall?
No, I think that since we're meeting like this right now, if we, if we call the public, uh, an executive session, you would say, "We're going to meet, um, an executive session for X amount of minutes," and then after the executive session was over, we would then reconvene on this medium that we're in now, on the, over the phone, so, if we made that, you would say that, um, you know, I'm just looking at the clock, it says it's nine oh nine, so you said, okay, we're going, I mean, technically, people to get down there, whatever, that's gonna take a few minutes, but you'd say, "We're gonna go in executive session for thirty minutes, so at, at nine thirty-nine, we'll reconvene, then we will be back on the phone at nine thirty-nine, and if we're not able to do that, we would still get back on the phone and say that we're going to be another ten minutes"
Yep, okay.
For, for executive session, and then come back to the phone and be, because this is our, this is our, our, this is our public session, is the phone.
Right, yep, I understand that, okay.
I'm on a cell phone, so I'd be happy to walk down and then put my phone on mute for the duration of our time together. I am still looking up, I, I, I'm pretty sure I've heard about other city councils meeting in person now, so I'm just trying to find the right page that talks about it.
Well, almost, it almost has to be, because there's no other way, and the council has to have a, a afforded opportunity or the means to do that, I would believe.
I know, I know the school board has done it on Zoom, where they asked people to leave, I don't know, Nathan, if you have the capability of, of making sure everybody is off the phone.
Yeah, we just have to look at that, at that, uh, package of Zoom that we purchased and see if that's available or not, to make sure that I'm allowed, I'm-
I mean, on, on your phone right now, on your, whatever, don't you have a, a system right now to see who's on?
Yes, yes, I do, in front of me. I have the ability to mute, um, I, but I think it mutes everybody.
Okay.
There's a mute mode, but I think it does all the callers involved.
But you can't, you can't pick and choose, it's the whole thing, isn't it?
Well-
Well, but muting would mute the microphone, not their ability to hear, right?
Right, but if, like, if we, if us five still wanted, or six, sorry, wanted to talk, um, if I cannot do it person by person, then nobody, we wouldn't be able to hear anything. If I can do it person by person, yeah.
Next, can you guys do executive session at the very end?
And just adjourn the public portion?
Right.
Well, we do have to, we have to report to the public afterwards, don't we?
I don't, I don't think you can end, I don't think you can end on a, on that.
You can't, you can't end on that?
I don't, I don't believe so, I, every, and I don't, I'm not an expert, I just know every, every executive session that we've done, you can call the public that, they, they don't have to come back, but the people that wanna be there, wanna come back, they have that right to do that, so, um, you come back and-
I wasn't sure, okay.
But you, you do have to end in public session, so, um, we'd have to, we can, you can't, you can't end an executive, you can't end the public session now, go to executive session and have that be there, that's, that's not allowed, so.
Okay, yep.
Okay.
I have a question, this is Peter.
Go ahead, Peter.
Uh, are the parties involved asking for a resolution to this issue tonight? It seems to me that what we should do as a council is go back to the recorded, tape-recorded versions of the meetings in question and get a verbatim text of what was said.
Well, at city hall, we have that recording.
Yeah, that's available.
But it hasn't been transcribed yet, we would have to transcribe it, or have it transcribed, am I correct? Would the parties involved consent to table this issue until we've had a chance to look at the verbatim text?
And I also would put on top of that, Peter, as well, to make sure we can, um, get a sufficient way to, um, go into executive session if we so choose to go that route.
Great. For my own, speaking for my own part, it would not be convenient for me to get to city hall for an executive session tonight. I'm on a landline phone, and then reconvene.
No, I agree, I think, um, if we choose to go that route, we should table it until we can figure out a course of action to accomplish that.
Would Mrs. Womack consent to that, I'd like to know.
Well, I've said my piece, I'm done. The only thing that Justin managed to complain about was that I had made one error in my, and misspoke, and he's right, I did, I included March, because I guess it, I didn't bother to look it up. So in speaking, I didn't bother to look it up, when I write in the newspaper, I check almost everything. And instead of taking exception to what I said about executive sessions and that he did misuse and misquote the law, instead he attacks me and tries to intimidate me, again, instead of dealing with the real issue-
Well, being that-
Is that he makes up the laws as he goes along.
Being that there's a five-person council here, what I would ask for at this time would to entertain a motion to table this until we can, uh, deal with it accordingly.
I appreciate you, Nathan, thank you.
Yep.
Peter makes sense of-
Well, Nathan's got the, there's nothing on our agenda, unless it was added, which I know David mentioned that, but you don't technically have to make a motion if you don't want to, uh, unless it's being formally added, just so you know.
Okay.
So I have found an official statement on this, that effective July twenty, in-person components of public meetings are limited to ten people for Phase Three counties. So it would be allowable for us to have a executive session in person, and I would still request that we do so.
Okay.
But we can put it to a vote.
Question first, Stephen, are you proposing a meeting tonight, Stephen?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry that it would be inconvenient, but, um, you wouldn't necessarily have to get back on afterwards if you wouldn't want to, Peter, that'd be up to you to, to decide whether you would wish to continue on, you could choose to leave the, the meeting early, but we would just need enough of the council members to return, report out, and close the meeting to, you know, have a forum, so.
Stephen, couldn't you all, could you also call Peter on, like, your cell phone to his landline, so that if, if there was three or four or five people there, that Peter could be on the-
Yeah, I can call you when I get down there, Peter, if you want.
Well, if that's what counts for once, I'll make a, make an effort to be there for the, for the executive session, it's just not, if we could push it off to another date or another meeting, that would, seems to me it would be more convenient, it would give us a chance to look at the transcription of the alleged statements of all parties. But if the council wants a executive session, I'll be there.
So I believe we have a motion to table on the floor.
Who's that motion made by?
I, Peter made it.
Okay.
Peter did.
Do we have a second? So what's plan of action going forward? We wanna set a time for executive session tonight?
I would, this is David, uh, I'm putting my shoes on right now, so we could say, uh, with nine thirty, we too much to ask?
To reconvene?
Uh, no, for me, I should, I should go to the session.
Oh, no, that's fine, and then, we, how long, you guys, uh, what's the original time for the executive session? Uh, twenty minutes?
Oh, that, you know, how, yeah, that, but all I know is we can't reconvene until that time is up.
Right. Okay, well, let's, uh, let's set a exec, executive session for nine thirty, and we can reconvene at nine fifty, and I can call in and extend that if we need to.
Okay.
I'm on my way.
I'll be there.
Okay, I'm signing off, I'll see you guys down there.